Welcome to our engagement session this afternoon. We are still doing things in Zoom mode and I suppose quite many of you probably welcome this arrangement. And I think at our end, we are also quite happy with this arrangement because it does save you the trouble of having to come down to the school. So we are, you know, in a process of trying quite a few things. So this time now we are trying the webinar. Mode in terms of running our session. So so we are also learning from this process. So ask for your forgiveness for so for your for for your. Understanding if we are not very skilled in operating this. So thank you very much for joining us. So I would start with my segment. To share with all all of us, perhaps some of the bigger ideas and understanding. At the school front before we will pass you to the year hits and then followed by the form teachers or in some. Session, it is the other way around. You will talk to the you will listen to the form teachers and subject teachers first before you will listen to the year hit. So today is very much for us to get in touch with you. It has been three weeks since our children come back. From their vacation. So three weeks into the new term, some of the. There are some of the routines that have been set up, some of the new teachers that your children have come to learn. Certain new routines being set in place and these further details will be shared with you as we move on. So just for this session itself. We have a Q and A function at the end, at the bottom of the screen. So if you have any questions, do type it in. You know, as and when you you have a question and I have my team of teachers here. Who will try to answer as many of your questions as possible while my presentation is ongoing. And then at the end of the session, we will also, I would also take up some of the questions that have not been answered. To try to address them, particularly those questions that perhaps the teachers feel that I should be sharing with everyone. So that will be how we will arrange for the Q and A part. An overview of this afternoon's sharing by me will be as follows. First of all, we will talk about the COVID nineteen vaccination for our children. That's one of the biggest. Kind of announcement from M O E with regards to the school operation and also things that really involves any of you. So we will talk about the situation of the vaccination in our school. And then we will go on to share with you our P S R result twenty twenty one because not all our parents have. P six students from last year, so you might not know about our performance. So we have a quick sharing on that. And then some of you might have already heard from the children going back home and sharing with you that the teachers have shared with them. In detail, some of the schools' expectations, what we call our our vision with regards to our students. So I will also share. Summary of that with all of you. The learning with technology, we are continuing this year. So I will again share with everyone. Some of our learning experiences since last year and our plan going forward this year. And then we will talk about the plans this year for our town hall and also about our the work done by our parents support group. So vaccination. So this is a very big topic and we see that there have been many reports in our local newspaper. Particularly some of these that you are seeing on screen. So we do see that the Omicron virus is spreading around the world, even in Singapore. We are. Starting to see an uptick in terms of the infection rate going beyond one for the last, I think, probably a week or so. So it is coming and we see certain reports that in countries whereby. The children are not vaccinated and these are probably children who are even younger than five years old, who are not vaccinated. You find that these become the transmission vectors. So while research shows that Omicron is less severe than the Delta, it is still. A deadly disease and there is still risk for our children. Who might. Who who might be infected by the variants and how that will cause them to fall ill. And they would also become the transmission vector for other members of our family. And here we see the US report in January ninth about US seeing a number of children being hospitalized. And of course, one of the big thing was that M O E was very clear about no vaccination differentiated plans for our children twelve and below. On nineteenth, which is just this week alone, we see newspapers reporting that two thirds of our primary school children have already signed up for their. For their shots and that we have on twentieth that our news reported that for Singapore cases. There have been no reports of serious side effects. So even I think some of us who might be reading beyond the Singapore newspapers, I think I read in CNN yesterday. About how vaccination continues to be the best way in terms of preventing. Serious disease from the transmission of COVID nineteen. I think that is something that for those of us who are interested, you can. Search for that in CNN. So these are some of the information that we can get with regards to the COVID nineteen situation in Singapore and also the rest of the world. So more and more students in our Singapore are getting vaccinated and that's something that we can see from the newspaper reports. It is important because it protects ourselves, it protects themselves and others within their family as well, particularly if within the family. There are members who are in the more vulnerable situations. It also protects, you know, together as a whole school community. We also are able to stop that kind of transmission happening within the school itself. So that is also something that is advantageous for us in terms of our running of the school. So right now there is no vaccination differentiated measures. And and I think M O E is very, very clear about that. But I think I just want to say that going forward, as you can see that. While the situation is changing. Other countries, you can see that. Even though they are very much for the respect of personal freedom and so on and so forth, but in terms of. The kind of public health control, they really didn't have much choice but to put in vaccination differentiated measures. Now for us in the school, it is not a situation that we want to get ourselves in. So we really much hope that this will not happen. But however, if you know, we go into a stage whereby. We we are opening up more activities and that for those students who are already vaccinated, we feel that they are safe to go for it. Then for those who are not vaccinated, I'm just not so sure if some parents might feel that. They would not allow their children to go for certain activities because they are not vaccinated. And I think from a school point of view, we just want to say that. Should such things happen, then that would actually have an impact on our children's learning and we thought that's. That will be the kind of missed opportunity that we really much hope will not happen going forward because you can see that in Singapore, we are. In the process of opening up more and more C C A will resume and for our school, we are resuming face to face C C A. Next week onwards, but with still with that kind of S M M control. So we can see that going forward unless the Omicrons. Run into a kind of. More serious kind of transmission and public health issue for Singapore. Otherwise, this whole process of opening up is going to continue. So for school, more and more of our activities will resume and I really very much not see a situation whereby some children's. You know, in in terms of parents, probably not from the school that we do not allow them to go, but if they are parents who will come to us and say that. They are not allowing, they are not consenting for their children to be involved because they have not been vaccinated. Then I think that will be something. That I hope I will not see. So so very much asking parents to to consider if you are in doubt about your children's to do abilities, do consult G P's. There are articles, we have sent it, send them out through our parent gateway for all of you to refer to. And you know, do come to us, consult your G P if you have any further questions. And we have sent out our links for you to respond because this is to help us to monitor. Our children's vaccination and also in terms of the understanding of the kind of vaccination rate within our school community so that later on when. M O E is going to allow us to open up more activities, we are able to see. The the kind of relative safety or whether there are pockets of vulnerability within our own students. So that's very much the vaccinations. For our children and 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 we for those who have not responded to us. Or who have responded to say that you are still not comfortable with your children going for vaccination. Do do kind of consider some of the points that we have just mentioned. In this P S L E, we have done very well in twenty twenty one despite being affected by the pandemic. So that's the the same. That we can say for the whole Singapore system. I think for those of us who are aware of education in some other countries. We know that they have been quite badly affected because of the COVID nineteen measures. But here in Singapore. We have been doing our best to make sure that our learning continues and for our school, I just want to say that our our children have done very well. Last year, despite that they actually had two years in their P five and their P six with their learnings being affected by. The pandemic. So we have a highest percentage of our students eligible for express. So they have a choice to 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 read their subjects at the express level. And we have the second lowest percentage of our students eligible for normal tech as compared to, okay, these highest and lowest. We are talking about comparison with our past five years of our. P S R results. So so we are talking about comparing with our own school's history for the last at least five years, five to nine years. So so we have the second lowest rate eligible for normal tech, meaning that most of them. Actually do have a choice to read normal academics or above in terms of their secondary school subject choices. We have also managed to maintain a relatively high number of our pupils emitted to D S A. The number twenty one might not look very fantastic, but then again, D S A is not something. That is easy to attain because secondary schools are very selective in terms of who they want to emit through the D S A without looking at their P S R results. So it is not something that we expect the majority of our children are able to attain. Even though we ask all of them to think through and consider if they do have a chance to enter certain schools. That are offering D S A. I just want to say that again, some of our questions when the new A L score comes on board. As to whether the new scoring will affect the whole. Kind of statistics or proportion of our students in terms of the opportunity entering into the different causes. We just want to say that nationally and even for our school wise, the new scoring stable system is stable. And in many, many ways, it is consistent with the old system. So there is no big. Changes that happened to the distribution of our students because of the change to the A L score. So that has been something. That we have been monitoring and we were very happy that it had turned out this way. So secondary school choices was something that was shared with everyone nationally. Towards the end of last year, and I think one of the key message from M O E was that nationally about eighty percents were emitted to their top three choices. So that's the national figure. We just want to share that in emergency, when we include. The entries through D S A and also specialized secondary schools such as Spectra because the posting to those schools are done. Through a manual process rather than a school choice. We actually have more than ninety percent. Of our students who are getting at least their first three choices of admission. So it shows that more than ninety of them actually have. Thought through very carefully about how they make their secondary school choices and we were very glad. With this outcome to show that our students are careful in the way they decide on the secondary schools that they want to apply to. And they have been generally very successful. Over ninety of them were able to be emitted into the their top three choices. So some of our students who who know who make it through D S A would include, of course, the schools like Nanggo's, Refos, N U S schools, math and science. But they will also include the neighborhood schools. So again, just in case our parents are not aware, D S A is now opened. For all secondary school or secondary schools are able to admit students through direct school admissions. So it is not just about the top tier schools. They are looking for the sharpest talents. All schools are looking out for talents as well. And therefore, it really opens up the the whole opportunity to many, if not most of our students. In terms of their school entry. So any one of them can look at that in, you know, in comparison with the kind of school that they are targeting at. And also in terms of their skill level to to them think through whether D S A is a viable way for them to and to to apply to the school. And once they enter these schools, then the stress and pressure from the P S L E would therefore be relieved. Most of them will not. Drop the studies just because they are successful in their D S A because P S R is still a very good check in terms of the. Degree of understanding that they have attained through their six years of education. But nevertheless, it's always good to know that you are already accepted in a school and therefore take that pressure off from your preparation in your P S L E. So. Some of the learning from this round of D S A, D S A and also secondary school admission is that cut off score. Continues to be quite stable and for many of the schools, for those of us with children who are in their P five and P six, if you. If you check the actual. Actual cutoff scores, you'll find that they are very, very close to what M O E has predicted. And because of the more coarse form of grading from two hundred, you know, two hundred over. Scores right now reduced to only about twenty scores, you'll find that. Going forward, the cutoff score of the secondary school will have become relatively stable. Means that unlike in previous years whereby some schools, their cutoff scores, P S L T scores could maybe change from two, three, five. To two, three, zero to two, three, five from year to year. You'll find that that kind of jump in terms of the cutoff score. Would be more rare going forward and that the cutoff A L scores would be relatively stable for most schools. And just want to again highlight that in the new scoring system, the order of choice is very important. Therefore, our students should be. Making those choices very carefully in terms of their top choice, whether they want to. You know, it's it's better for them to try to target at a at a stretch school or whether they want to play safe to put their actual. The the choice, the school that they feel that they are more confident to get in as their first choice. Because if they're, if they are scoring, if they're expected, A L score is very near to the cutoff score. Then they might get themselves into a balloting situation. So so and and in that kind of situation, the order of choice is very important. So not to waste the choices away. And for us in our school, those of us with P six students last year, you know that our school have started this whole process. Of guiding our children in terms of going through their secondary school choices at critical point in time. We have done that for our P six. So this year we are also rolling out similar things for our P five. And even at our younger level, you can see that the whole process right from primary two whereby we get them to choose their C C A through a very systematic. Way of considerations and then. Throughout their whole C C experience, our teachers will go in to talk to them about. The kind of developments that they are experiencing and whether they need to. Push themselves towards a certain direction of development so that they are also equipping themselves with skills beyond just the academic studies. We also want to ask that because I think last year when we speak to our children, some of them were kind of like reflecting about how. They do have certain idea and and choices of schools, but they were saying about how sometimes their parents objected to their choices and and they felt. Rather disappointed or demoralized. So just something whereby I think from a school angle, we want to encourage our children to be independent thinkers. To also be making their own choices. So I I hope that parents, you are having that conversations with them. But then I think, listen to them, let them make their choices. All schools, I I think if you talk about, you know, within this Woodlands neighborhood as well, we we have our own colleagues. Teaching in in these schools. So we do know that in all schools, we are, all our colleagues are making their best efforts. To to educate our children well. So we we are very confident that whatever whatever school, whichever school that they ended up in. They will receive good educations and they will be the best that they can be. So do allow your children to make that choices themselves. So some other points about education. Recently, again, our ministers was talking about how. Going forward, our education should be less about front loading. Meaning that it's not just about getting a degree and after that, that's it. You don't learn from the rest of your life, but that we need to continuously. Upgrade ourselves throughout our whole lifetime. So therefore, degrees and certificates becomes less important. And that we should be seeing ourselves as learning as we go and continuously throughout our whole employment's life. And I think he in in this particular news article, particularly towards the end, he also alluded to this angle whereby. Going forward, other than, you know, like when degrees and certificates are not so important, but that continuous learning becoming more important. With that kind of complex skills sets required, the kind of situation whereby the job that is going to come on board tomorrow. Doesn't even exist today and that for many of our youngsters, they are actually creating their own job. By by bringing, you know. With themselves in terms of what kind of skill sets they are able to offer and try to fit themselves into a particular chain of work. So these are the kind of work expectations going forward and therefore. If our children are able to develop a wider range of interests and experience. And particularly those experiences and interests that will make them unique, then it really puts them in a in a very good state that they are able to. Have something that other peoples are not able to offer and therefore can carve themselves a niche in the whole job market. And even creating their own job and capitalize on their own unique know how. So that's very much what this article was trying to say. And therefore, with that, we refreshed our own school vision and we summarize it into these four points. But then they actually exist in a rather, a rather longish kind of paragraphs, which we are in the process of sharing. With our children. These are all very big lofty aims and we are right now at the start of sharing with them. Trying to get them to understand what these statements actually means and what do they have to do. To build themselves towards such a vision. So they might bring it back at home to talk you, talk to you about it. So we are just starting this process and if you do have. Any, you know, any, any information, you know, about the conversations that your children go back and and talk to you about and sharing it with us. With the teachers, that would be, that will be something that we would really very much want to hear because we do want these statements to be just empty statements. We want them to be something that our children think through about it and then have conversations among themselves, have that thinking within themselves and even bring that up to. Talk to you about them. So I don't be surprised if they come back to at home to talk to you about these statements and then engage us if you have any questions. So vision is our estimations, destination. So very much, we don't see that as something that they can achieve tomorrow. But we are seeing these as something that they should be building themselves towards these endpoints. So we are going to be putting in many processes. We are in the process of. Changing some of our processes to sharpen it so that it is clear in terms of that alignment with our visions. So you will see more of that coming up. We are preparing to commemorate our school's twenty fifth anniversary this year. However, a lot of our plans are either put on hold or have to have to be changed along the way because of all these changing pandemic situations. So we are definitely targeting our main event to be at the end of term two. So that is quite definite. We might not be able to open it up for many people to attend, but in this day and age, I think we will still do the broadcast. Out to make sure that as many people can share the event online with us as much as possible. So your children will be roped in to in terms of this preparation. So they might be coming back, particularly. Those of them who are involved in performance or or even other processes. They might come back to share with you about their involvement in the preparations. And more information will be shared with you as we move along and if there are things that we can confirm with you. Okay, next article, I think our previous minister of our education right now, Minister of Health. Was talking about Singapore, the lessons from Horizon Four Great Cities and within the excerpts from his speech. It was also alluded to us about this whole thing about home based learning, about how education is changing. Has changed and we are probably not going back to where we were before the pandemic. So I just kind of want to highlight this part. Of course, the article itself is very interesting to read and I hope that many of you have also read that. It talks about one to one device system that are being promoted at the secondary level, but here we are. We we have been doing this over the last few years since twenty thirteen. So we, we know that there are parents, some parents who are who are concerned about this. Particularly, I think some of the feedback that we have received would be about the control of our children's device use. So we are, we have been making efforts and you will see more. From us this year, particularly in terms of understanding the kind of device use that our children are having at home with you. Some of the issues or challenges and that you face and then sharing them with us. So that our teachers would also understand what are the kind of situation that you encounter at home and be able to come up with strategies. For us to perhaps remind our children, set up with our children and also sharing these strategies with you as to how we can work together. To make sure that our our children are using the devices in a way that is not out of control. There have been, you know, newspaper report right now, I think the the most important thing is probably about the the scammers. That have taken away monies from some of our Singaporeans and we are again also concerned about our children. Falling into some of these related traps, even though they are not currently, most of them, I think they did not have a account. Right now and have that kind of access to electronic bank transfer. But nevertheless, there are other risks out there. But we really do believe that we we cannot just shield our children from that and that we need to. Start that conversation early as well because one of the advantage that we know that why we are engaging them so early is because. They are, when they are younger, they are able, if we if we mold up with a more certain kind of habits in them. Because of their younger age, they they tend to be able to go with us a little bit more as compared to children who after they reach their teenage years. It might be slightly more difficult to convince them that certain measures are necessary. I think particularly, you will see that the uproar of. Of control in the devices that was being voiced up in secondary schools. You you see that in primary schools, we have been having that all these years, but our our children are, you know, they are they are young. So so they just accept it along the way. And I think that's how we want it to be, to see that as a way of life and to study early. So balance of device and traditional methods, some of you have reflected to us, some some of, some of you say that. Oh, I was expecting more device use, but how come the school, you know, is just using them in this kind of small ways. Of course, on the other end of spectrum, some of you feel that we are using them too much. So so it's a balance that we we need to. Establish and we are continuously trying to kind of push the boundaries a little bit more. So work with us. Let share with us your thoughts and then we can also understand and to move forward in terms of how we can make this better. So learning with technology is something that I think last year we have. We have wrote it out and I think for many of our parents, what you remember was like the four, the four times a year whereby there is this whole. Learning with technology, L W T tasks that our students need to complete and because some of these tasks are graded. So so that kind of brought you into it and and caught your attention. But we just want to again explain that this whole learning with technology is not just about the the few sessions of tasks that they need to complete. But rather it is part of our longer plan to make learning with technology part of our children's learning process. As we have said. The 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 kind of old ways of teaching and learning is, we are not going to go back to that. And now that we are, we have been along the journey of using technology, we are not not going to wait for the next pandemic. Before we we catch ourselves up with technology use in our teaching and learning system. We are using this opportunity to jumpstart and to continue to develop that further so that anytime. Any pandemic struck, anytime we have to close school, we are, we are very ready to move into home, complete home based learning. But even without home based learning, technology learning is going to be a part and parcel of our mainstream learning process. And that's something that we want to achieve and we are taking steps to do that. The L W T tasks are just some of. And that's something that we want to achieve and we are taking steps to do that. The L W T tasks are just um some of it. And and this year you will see that um we are also going to be integrating the tasks. Uh more with our day to day instructions so that the children will see that the the L W T task is not just something that sprung up. Uh out of nowhere, that is not connected with a day to day learning, but that that day to day learnings are closely connected with all these tasks that they are doing. Um they. They continue to be open ended in nature's, um they will not have any fixed answers uh and personal efforts will come. Uh and that the planning and the communication of uh whatever and however they do it uh will be the key that we are emphasizing. Um so we have also refined some of our tasks based on last year's implementation. Uh so you will see uh some of the changes that are happening to this year's tasks. Um so we are going to the second year of implementation and iterations. And we continue to ask you to 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 share with us your thoughts and your observations about how our children uh are uh doing that at home. Now, some of these tasks are weighted, some are not weighted. Again, it is part of our experimentation. We don't want it to be a case whereby. Uh because it is it is it is weighted, therefore the children um place more emphasis on that. Uh we actually want to say that whether it's weighted or not, um they they are being uh some of the tasks are being weighted. Um not because the 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 subject wanted the children to place that at the highest priority. But we just kind of want to play around with this thing about how whether it's weighted or not weighted, we um it should not make a difference. Uh the the children should actually uh spend just as much time and effort on each and every one of them. And that's something that we want to, we want to uh achieve and we we are again playing with that, with that kind of make sure we want to see how our children. Uh are choosing the tasks uh and efforts to put in and we continue to want to educate them. Uh to to look into their task beyond just about whether they are weighted or not. Okay, so we do ask that you help and uh encourage and support them as such as possible. Um but there's no need to coach them too closely uh and and just let them make the mistakes. Um and uh there is really no need for our parents uh to know and to know the the answers especially. Okay, because we are not looking for that answer and we are not expecting those kind of answers. Okay, if some of our children are giving us the university answers, we will be very concerned because that is not expected and we know that is definitely not their effort. Yeah. So um the schedule is as such, um more will be shared with you. Um these slides and the and the presentation will be shared in our YouTube channels. Uh and our and our websites and um there will be also letters uh writing to you to inform you about the dates. Um for these L W T, but right now we are just uh sharing the first cut uh with you. Um so the 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 schedule is roughly the same as uh previous uh last year. So um just uh watch out for more of the announcements. So the first one is coming up during the March holiday. So so it's still quite a few weeks away. Alright, so next, I just want to go on to the town hall meetings. So um. That's uh our way of wanting to engage you and uh last year we have run a a series of it. Uh and we know that um not many uh have attended live, but nevertheless, um I think. Um some of the topic like you can see here, this is our plan for this year. Uh we know that some of these the topic might only be relevant uh to some of you. So we are not expecting like a large audience for that. Uh but it's just our way of reaching out and making sure that parents who need uh more information with regards to some of these topics. Uh you have, you have a way and the school uh have uh such sessions to engage you and to uh hear you out. With regards to your concerns and to address them in these platforms. Uh so we will continue with this um. Survey questions, uh we are, we we have been and we will continue those regular. Uh questionnaires that we send out to you to ask you about uh questions that you might have um for us before each of these sessions. So we encourage you to continue to raise your questions with us so that we are able to make use of these. Uh sessions to answer them for you as much as we can. So um so give us feedback uh on these um. Perhaps certain topics that we have not been including. Um or even timing or even the way or other things that you feel that we should be addressing, um just let us know. Yeah. So parent support group, um we want to thank our parent support group, um because they have been our very supportive partner. Uh they have been uh our bridge, um even last few years, uh when there's all these changes. Uh with regards to um the COVID nineteen um measures. Um our P S G members have been coming to us to 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 let us know your concerns and so that we are able to address. Um most of them either uh telling them to our P S G members so that they can pass on to you or we actually. Um use some of these feedback uh as part of our larger communication that we actually sent out on mass to most of you. So our P S G continue to play a very important role in terms of our communications uh with the parents. Um so um we want to, um we want to thank them for 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 all their partnerships with us and we want to encourage. Um those of us out there who feel that um you can play a role in this. Uh and that you 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 are willing to help us in this, to come and join us in our P S G membership as well. Um there are still a bit of limitations uh as to as to what we can do right now because of the COVID nineteen measures. But we really hope that uh as we slowly open up more and more of these activity, uh we resume. Um please don't see that as something that will uh zip up a lot of the time. Uh our parents, um you know, um support um group members uh also are 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 juxtaposing. Uh some of the responsibility with our time and we are very understanding uh and during your busy period, uh we also understand that we will not. Uh want to kind of um pull you away from those things. And um so we we kind of um try to work things out. Um because we know that parents are busy as well, um but we we want uh as much uh as possible to kind of be able to hear from you. Uh and we have been having our regular touch base with our uh P S G members uh during the uh month three meeting as well. So that was also a very, very uh useful and helpful process for us to hear from them and to address some of the questions that you have raised to them. Um so time, talent and your thoughts do uh come to us with it. Uh join the parent support group and you are able to talk to us even more uh directly. So I just also want to share that studies have shown that parents who are actively involved uh in partnership with school actually do have a positive impact. Uh on the student self esteem and motivation. Um so uh do do think through about that and uh we want to encourage more of you to join us. Um so with that, uh I want to thank everyone for your attention and we will move on um to the Q and A. Okay, um so uh in terms of um the um questions, um I'm not so sure if everyone can see these questions about. The um D S A including which subject, just want to say that um if there's a mixture. So uh some of our students entered the the schools via um subject talent, meaning that uh they are good in certain subjects, like I think. Uh I'm not so sure, but it's particularly last year, but um there are always to our students who got into, let's say, Yishun Town because of um Tamil language. Um so because um Yishun Town Secondary School do have a a language elective program in Tamil. So uh our students are able to show uh their um knowledge and their skills in terms of their language skills. Uh and their know how in terms of the culture and and they were able to convince uh Yishun Town Secondary Schools to admit them. Um because of the Tamil language. So we do have that, but we also have many of them who have entered um through C C As. Uh through student leadership. So student leadership is um not necessarily um just prefects. Um but other kind of uh student leadership role uh would also uh be something that uh can be considered. Under the broader umbrella of student leaderships. So it is a mixture of academic subjects, um C C As. Uh and also leadership's uh capabilities that the secondary school um are uh looking into. Um so um it's a wide range of uh skill sets. So that's why we do want our students from young, even at P three, P four. Uh they should be thinking through what are the kind of skill sets that they want to uh cultivate. Uh so that D S A becomes something that they are able to consider uh for their secondary school entry. Alright. Um, okay, so let me see, uh um a lot of workbook not used by our teachers, okay. Now, alright, um so there is this question about um noticing that the workbooks are not used extensively by the teachers. Uh as what uh the parents are expected. Um so just want to uh say this that I think we are very well aware of this situation. And um this is something that our school will continue to monitor. Um in situation whereby the workbook is really very much uh not useful anymore. Uh we actually have taken them out of our uh book list. Um but for many of the cases, uh why we keep the workbook there, even though the teachers are not going through them. Uh one of the reason is because uh we have a, we have a set of uh worksheets that we feel are better tailored. Um to um to go with the flow of our lessons. Okay, so the the worksheets will be the the major way uh that our teachers will get our students to go through. But nevertheless, the workbook would still be um helpful in terms of providing that kind of fundamental um practice. Uh or concept clarification for our students that we feel uh they can do on their own. And and that's why we 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 feel that we did not take them out of the uh book list because we feel that for some children. Uh whom I need um further strengthening uh of their um foundation understanding, they might find those book helpful. So that's why we are keeping some of, we are, we are keeping them in our book list. But we understand from you, from a parent's point of view, that you are seeing that the workbook is not being used. So why spend the money buying that? So i- it's something that um we 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 can't, we we can't um kind of like custom. Customize them at this stage, okay? Uh it's something that we are still uh needing to consider further, but do come back to us and let us know. Uh but just to understand that, um you know, while some parents feel that, okay, there's no need. Um but they are, they are children who feel that those are helpful. Um and especially for their, you know, like particularly, most of the time, I think when we are using our own worksheet is because um. We feel that the workbook might be too simple. Okay, so um but then those simple practices might still be helpful uh for our children to strengthen their fundamental understanding. So it's good actually for them to practice on their own and our teachers most likely have told them that. Okay, uh so that's the kind of um. Uh situation that we are in, but do um share with the teachers about your own thoughts uh and. And 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 we will, you know, the teachers will also take it back um to discuss with us at the management level. Uh and also year to year, we are also uh looking at these uh workbooks and also making that decision from year to year as to whether we still want to keep them. Yeah, so so be reassured that we are continuously reviewing that. Alright, okay, um. Alright, so next, um okay, in terms of the slots, alright, um there are some overlaps, so. Um we we have different ways of uh working out the session. So we hope that um most of you will be able to find a a kind of um. Uh sequence of attending the sessions that will work for you. Okay. Um if your child, uh whether you want your child to drop higher Chinese halfway, if he or she cannot cope with it. Um raise it up with the with the Chinese teachers, uh we are constantly reviewing that and uh of course, we want to encourage them to take on. Uh if we feel that um they are still okay now, when we say they cannot cope, uh I think there are various way of looking at it. I think we might draw the line in a different way. Uh some parents might feel that as long as they cannot get a distinction means that they cannot cope, but we don't feel that way. And I think when we want our children to take the higher mother tongue, not just higher Chinese, but higher mother tongue is because we want them to have more exposure to the language. Uh and we are looking at it in terms of the long run whereby uh we, you know, looking at their whole education career all the way until secondary school. Um the stronger is our foundation in um primary school, um the less effort they will need to spend on their mother tongue when they go on to the secondary schools. So even if they are not taking up higher mother tongue, we feel that to stay with my higher mother tongue as much as possible. Uh we'll actually give them a stronger foundation. So that, so that's very much where we are coming from. So even though from parents' point of view is that, yeah, my child, my child is really not coping. But I think from our point of view, uh as long as we feel that the children are still benefiting in terms of their language learning. Uh we very much still feel that they should continue with this. So that's very much uh our school angle on this. Alright, um. Okay, um thank you. Uh M D M, okay, M D M be implemented for primary six. Um I think right now, um our stand is this, that at primary three and primary four, the M D M for the iPad. Uh is being implant implemented because they are new to the system. Uh and um that's why we we need the control to be put in place. Now, when it comes to five and six, we actually have relaxed that whereby the children can be bringing any devices. And because it is a more open system, uh we tend not to go with M D M. And for us, the the understanding is that uh particularly for those who have already gone through P three, P four with M D M. We um feel that they should have built up that kind of self control such that by the time they reach five and six, we are able to remove the M D M. And the children are then exercising their own uh control. But if you feel that these are still issues. Uh with your children do have a word uh with the teachers and we can look into uh how we can put in device control. It might not be M D M, but it might be other ways of device control that we can put in to help the child manage the uh technology use. Alright, so um, yeah, thank you. Uh let me just uh scroll down um for others. Okay, uh in terms of the P S L E scoring system, um preparation and selection of secondary. Uh school for primary three and above. Okay, um thank you very much for your suggestions. Uh in terms of the scoring system. Uh we have been running those uh session in the previous years because uh last year was the first year. Uh but going forward, if um there are parents who still feel that uh you have not been in touch uh in in terms of those uh past. Uh sharing and that you will want to know more, uh I think we can uh run some of these sessions. So uh do keep an eye, we will think through uh and uh we will make those announcement to share with you. Yeah. Okay, the teacher session will be starting soon. So I think uh I would agree very much uh need to end this uh session here. So once again, thank you parents for joining us um today and uh you you might want to uh exit from this uh presentation to join. Um the teachers and the year hits presentation. So thank you very much for joining us today. Thank you.